Troy Kennedy with the tax staff, Tom Gallagher, who's the Vice President of Operations for Ultium Cell LLC, and then Jim Hartnett, who's part of our team, he's been involved quite a bit, he's the manager for environmental and sustainability for General Motors, so he joined us here as well tonight. I just really want to say a couple of quick things. First of all, just to thank you for your consideration, for the tax abatement, the development agreement, they're a critical part of the process, and also to say how great your team has been. Bill, Jeff, the entire team, they've been working hard behind the scenes. This concept of the website that the Chamber put on, Troy and Jim and I, we do this around the country, I think that's the first time we've seen something like that. So really to open it up to all kinds of detailed information, full transparency, we've added some things, provided information that they've asked us about to provide to that website, so it's really been a great tool, that's something we'll take away and we'll take to some other communities when we're looking to do investments, because we really think it's a great opportunity. As far as the process, once, if the business case is approved, we really hope to have an investment decision and then also a location decision. Yet this year, very aggressive schedule, hope to break ground at one of the locations yet the end of 2022, if not this year, then early next year, with, as we've mentioned, operations starting in 2025. So once again, just want to thank you for your consideration, I hope you approve both the tax abatement and as well as the development agreement, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have, but thank you for your time.
With any other comments, Mr. Ray, or, okay, thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 11922. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Jared Huss, Lawson Fisher Associates, 525 West Washington Ave., South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I was asked on behalf of the Town Council to read a statement of support, so again, I'm only representing on behalf of the Town Council per their request. Town Council of New Carlisle has been working with St. Joseph County to address the concerns of the town residents regarding development activities over the past several years. Notable outcomes of those efforts were memorialized in a resolution designed to limit the area of development, delineate the types of development allowed, to minimize the effects of the development on the local area. The resolution was agreed upon by the New Carlisle Town Council, Olive Township, St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission, St. Joseph County Council, and St. Joseph County Commissioners. As the process of development has continued, St. Joseph County and the Town of New Carlisle have completed a number of action items within and have commonly adhered to the terms of the resolution. As the Ultium Cells project has continued to come into the focus, into focus, the town has brought the following items to the forefront to be addressed in the development agreement: the institution of aquifer groundwater and water quality monitoring, to ensure both the quality and quantity and quality of the water is not negatively impacted by the development; the requirement that the development project must be connected to town water to maintain control of its important natural resource; the requirement that truck traffic generated by both the construction and the development, of the development and operation of the facility be directed to State Road 2 in Larison; a pledge to cooperate with NDOT to address State Road 2 corridor safety for residents and school buses, including improvements to State Road 2 at the intersections of Larison, State Road 2 at Timothy, and State Road 2 at County Line; the provision of the specialized training for fire officials and stations that would respond to the development and properly address emergency issues should an incident arise. As this process has progressed, the town has met with the county, Chamber, and Ultium teams to discuss these items and has been reassured by the response and interactions. Each of these items have either been included in the development agreement or in the process of being addressed in concert with agencies like NDOT. While there is plenty of work to continue to ensure each of these items is seen to completion, the town is confident the spirit of cooperation will continue in conjunction with the terms of the previous resolution and development agreement. With these considerations in mind, the town is optimistic that this generational project can be a benefit to the town, our region, and are in support of moving forward.
Thank you. Sir, I'm sorry, could you, could you please sign in, and everyone coming up to speak, could you please sign in? It's right in back of you there. Could you please sign in, sir? Please state your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes to address the council.
Hi there, Will Miller, Olive Township Trustee, 110 South Arch, New Carlisle. Through this process, you know, when we heard about the Ultium possibilities, there's a lot of skepticism, a lot of questions, right? And I feel that all of those have been answered, whether it be the aquifer, truck traffic, pollution, and when you think about a project that our community wants, this is that type of project, it's a green project, right? It's not, it doesn't have a lot of smoke stacks or steam stacks, and so it's, it, from all the information that we're seeing, it really fits the parameters of what we want to see in that area. And so, you know, with that, the people that I've talked to in our area are in favor of it. I know that there are a few that are not, and I understand those, but for the most part, the folks that I talk to are in favor of the project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this bill? We're going to get to the people online, please bear with us. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you again for allowing us to speak today. My name is Shelley Klug. I'm Economic and Business Development Manager for Indiana Michigan Power with offices in South Bend, Indiana. I just wanted to say that I've worked in economic development for over 20 years, this is a fantastic project, based on what I have learned in that time. I've been with the utility company for only six, but in that six years, I have learned some kind of surprising things. One of the things that I've learned, and I don't know, maybe everybody else knows this, but the energy company cannot produce power until there's a need for it, so we don't get to speculatively build renewable energy or any other generating sources until there's a demonstrated need for it. And the other thing is, it's not that easy being green, I feel like I'm quoting Kermit the Frog, but it's not easy being green. So we want to be building more clean energy, renewable energy resources, but surprisingly, and I know this community has recently approved a solar field, a couple of them recently, but you know, there are actually communities out there that don't, they want clean energy, but they don't necessarily want the solar arrays or the wind farms near them. So it's some of these surprising things about what we want, but we don't want. So it's just been kind of interesting to see this project develop, because it is something that we all want. We do want a company that is going to buy renewable energy, which means we now have the justification to add more renewable energy resources. We want clean cars, we want to do away with fossil fuels as much as possible, so those require batteries. And so having that manufactured close to us, we get the benefit of, A, the supply chain is, I mean, we've all talked about that many times before, in fact, when y'all were talking about the warning sirens, the gentleman mentioned the supply chain holding that process up, and I'm like, oh, every day we hear about something in the supply chain that is making us wait longer than we've ever had to wait before, and it's so disruptive. So I am 100% in favor of any project that brings manufacturing of the items, the products that we need and want, to North America, preferably the United States, and most preferably, close enough where we can get the benefits of the taxes, the jobs, and the products that are being created there. So I thank you for your support and hope to see you all at a groundbreaking maybe someday soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Morton, esteemed members of council, Andy Castelny, 52860, Junea Perode, South Bend, Indiana, 46637. A different address than what I used to give. Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to speak. I also want to thank council, a lot of times the government doesn't move at the speed of business, so I appreciate your willingness to kind of bend your rules to accommodate this project, because, you know, government doesn't like to do things different than how we do it, so I appreciate all of your efforts in making that happen. But this is the kind of project that we, that we make sure we fit into a schedule. This is a once-in-a-generation project. We'll look back at this in 20 years, and this will be, you know, kind of the launch point of unparalleled growth and development, not just in the New Carlisle area, but in Sancho County, between home building and all the other things that will come as a result of this. And this is exactly the kind of project we wanted, we fought for, we did all this work for. We weren't looking at smoke stacks, we weren't looking at car grinders, we were looking at green projects. And if we move forward with this, this further solidifies Sancho County's commitment to green energy, and that is what I think a project that we can all get behind. So I urge you to please support this project, thank you for your work, and once again, we're about to make history, I guess you are about to make history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, my apologies for coming back, but during the committee piece of this, remember I presented two letters of support, one from State Senator David Zgotsky and one from Mayor James Mueller from the city of South Bend. I just wanted to be on record that, that both of them were in support, were not able to be here this evening, and you have those letters of support without sort of going through the detail, but just wanted to make sure you remember that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Steve F.?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I can't get video working, so you're lucky you luck out not having to look at me. I appreciate your, the opportunity to make comments. A month ago, I made some comments, or four points, that I'd like to see in the development agreement and in the negotiations going forward. One was to extend the process a little further or longer, and I'm glad that you did that. It allows you to practice the due diligence you need to make sure that this project is one that fits with our county, rather than moving in, you know, basically two weeks' time, you took a month to review it. The others were the water monitoring, and I was really pleased to see that in the development agreement, and four new wells that could be used for monitoring, company paying for the first five years, and I hope the county would extend that, or the Town of New Carlisle. Additionally, it's much better to be proactive than reactive on groundwater pollution, which we have a severe problem in this area, with companies that have produced or polluted groundwater. The second thing was on net zero by the company, I was pleased to see with the Chamber's website, which I would encourage and hope that we can have that for all large development projects, because that was essential in understanding what this company is bringing. They have a net zero goal, that's least stated by 2030 for their operations, I hope they meet that, and I hope that we can have regular updates if they do choose to move here. Finally, on the solar, on the, on the, the net zero issue, Solar Rex Renewable Energy Certificates are a second-best alternative to direct solar energy and production on-site, and I was disappointed, and this is directed to the company, that you aren't designing the building to be solar-ready, that you could put solar panels on top in the beginning or at some future point, because that's direct revenue for you, as well as it provides, it makes sure that we're building renewable energy to fight climate change. And as you know, the built team would not exist without a commitment the United States is making to fight climate change and to produce electric batteries for vehicles. So I would hope that would be reconsidered, you can build it on parking lots as well, you can install it locally, you have a lot of land there, it's a lot better to have it on the building, because you don't have the footprint like in the honeysuckle site, which takes up farmland. And I and M, I do appreciate their support for the project, I do hope this means that you can abandon your, your plans to build more fossil fuel plants.
Sir, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Yeah, I hope that this indeed helps you make that case for all renewable build-outs with battery storage or storage of some kind in the future, rather than building a large natural gas plant that would last 30 to 50 years and continue with climate carbon gases being emitted for local energy production. So I am in favor, I moved from neutral to being in favor of the project, I appreciate everyone's work on it and the time given to the public to look over the material, to understand, this is the largest tax abatement I think you've ever granted of about $260 million, and that you needed at least a month to consider that, and I hope that the business moves at the speed of business, as I've heard they will, and that they look favorably upon our community in coming together to support the project. Thanks very much.
Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Steve Francis, 54174, Duda Lake Drive.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak in favor of this project, of this bill, I should say? Hearing none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak here present in opposition of Bill 11922? Please sign in, and you have three minutes to address the council, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. I beg to differ with my friends, Jared Huss and Will Miller. I eat, I walk my dogs every day in New Carlisle. I'm right in the heart of downtown, as we like to call it, the financial district. I talk to a lot of people, I eat at the establishments, I know there are a lot more than a few people who are questioning this development. So there, either they don't talk to a whole lot of people if they think there's just a few of us who are, and it's not that we oppose it, we have questions that we still want answered. And I have to say, most of my questions have been satisfactorily answered. To, I'm comfortable with, I've got one more question here, but I want to address a few things. First off, Andy, we don't need another grinder, you already gave, the county already gave us one, we were stuck with one out there, so grinder wasn't even on our, on our realm. One question that I have asked to be answered from the beginning was that we get a printout of, there's a sales development rep, a tech support rep, a director of finance and accounting, a business systems analyst, a material handler, a warehouse lead, a warehouse associate, a production support tech. How many workers in each of these categories, because they're paid at different levels, some of them are salaried, some of them are houred, how many people in each category will be hired here out of the 1,600? Because the number, just giving us an average number or giving us a total number just skews what somebody coming in at the bottom, a warehouse worker, is going to earn. Don't tell us everybody here makes an average of $22,500 or $22.50 an hour, okay? But have you got five people making $1,000 an hour and 1,595 people making 15? It doesn't, we need to see a print, a hard copy for everybody to read of how many people in each category on each shift, there, I assume there will be the same number of people in that job category on both, both of the 12-hour shifts. But that, that is my remaining question. They have, Bill and Jeff and all have answered my questions satisfactorily, except for I sure would love to see the train still be the transport in for the raw materials and the transport out for the finished product, to keep, the truck traffic is crazy right now, I can't imagine what 150 to 200 more trucks a day is going to do to my commute to and from my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Humberger, 29987, Herd Road, Olive Township, been there for more than 50 years. Thanks for letting me speak to you again. Getting out on State Road 2 from side roads is currently very risky at certain times of the day. What do we think it would be like when Ultium adds some 800 cars per shift and 150 trucks per day? I worry about school buses and young drivers crossing, trying to cross, get across State Road 2. This is not Ultium's problem, it's, it's yours. The potential danger from an intersection should be called to a better solution. Deceleration Lane east and west of Larison is, is not the best solution. As far as the groundwater, Peerless Midwest Report was mostly about withdrawals from the aquifer, very little about input into the aquifer. The Kenke Key is an unconsolidated aquifer, which means that most of the area does not have a clay protection layer. I can sometimes dig down and hit water at six feet certain times of the year. Finding pollution after the fact with monitoring wells is like shutting the barn door after the horse has bolted. Better to try to prevent the, the problem from happening in the beginning. The 2.8 million square feet building equals 64 acres of roof, and another 18.9 of paved areas, we're guessing, that's all to be drained of stormwater. Jeff Ray guesses that it will be drained by interconnecting dry wells and retention ponds. This would, this is too much stormwater for that solution. We need, we need to protect the aquifer. Also, every retention pond needs an overflow to a drainage ditch. With climate change, we don't know how often overflow would happen, and when they do, it floods the farmers at the south end of the Nessbajani ditch. A cleaner solution would-
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
A cleaner solution would be a vegetated roof, reduce the runoff, and sisters holding tanks could hold, filter the stormwater. A rain garden swales could, adjacent to parking, could lead to wetland retention area, and we have one of the best premier companies in Walkerton right here for wetland cleansing This morning, GM and Alge both thought of their environmental concerns, and if they and the county are going to talk, they should walk the walk. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mary Countryman, 52959, Timothy Road, New Carlisle. I ask you to please table or vote no for this at least until the following is addressed. There has been so much stress on jobs, wages, and benefits at the last several meetings. There are currently over 2,000 job openings within 25 miles of New Carlisle, of the New Carlisle ZIP code, most making more to start than the stated Ultium wage of $1,650 per hour. A few example, examples are the general stamping and mellow works with wages starting at over 21 an hour and an added $2 per hour second shift bonus. They also offer excellent benefits. New Carlisle Post Office is hiring, also with great benefits, $24.89 an hour, Five Star Sheets is hiring. There are and have been hiring signs all around New Carlisle and the surrounding area as well, especially in the Olive Road and Nimitz Parkway. Most of these jobs pay well over what Ultium is offering from what we've heard so far. We want to see the actual numbers of the benefits, but we also need a clear explanation of, a definition of area, while we're, while we are told millions of dollars it'll bring here, where specifically, what or who will benefit from these millions? Is this going back into the TIF fund, the county, will it even stay in Olive Township? In our, in our past, our New Carlisle restaurants, they usually do benefit during the construction phase when something is built, and that's great, but after that, not so much. There is not much benefit, so show us the math. Telling us a study uses IMPLAN may tell us a process that was used, but we'd like to see the actual numbers for the $652 million benefit that it's supposed to bring to our area. The few, very few who have been speaking for this have money to gain for their jobs. Jeff, Bill, Shelley, they all have something for their job, they don't live in New Carlisle. So many do not want this in our area. The town representatives and the, and the Olive Township trustee do not speak for the majority of the people. Several of them, no IEC signs have been blown away from the winds, but there are still several that do not want this. As I said at the meeting this morning, I would like to see the county departments work together to improve economic development. What started as TIF was a good idea in 1952 in California-
Ma'am, we have 30 seconds.
But, but if you're considering a productive acorn field as a menace to society and economic interest for its inhabitants, something is very wrong. In the past, the county, at county meetings, I have heard one particular member speaking and pounding his fist on the table about jobs and benefits that are so needed in this Practice what you preach. Your own county website has so many jobs and they're only making $32,000 a year, $15 an hour, $16 an hour. If you're going to be preaching that we need good jobs, good-paying jobs, start with yourself, work with the county, work with the economic development, give good job, good-paying jobs to your own employees, and if there's anything you could do for New Carlisle, work with the existing buildings we have in the town. We just had the village shops close up. Work with the town, put a business that fits appropriately in our community, not taking out more fields to put in more buildings to have more unfilled jobs. Thank you.
Good evening. Deborah Doral, 21677, Autton Road, South Bend. Thank you very much for this special hearing and for all of the work that you have done on this. The massive amount of information and detail deserves quite a bit of respect for yourselves as well as the county personnel and the consultants. So I heartily appreciate the fact that the county has come a long way in five years, in my opinion, about their awareness and their intention to address the environmental issues that affect our overall quality of life in a major way. I heartily endorse the letter that Jared Huss read from the New Carlisle Town Council. Those sentiments indicate where my concerns still remain. I understand that from a business climate perspective, that this is a good thing for all of the people who are in favor of that, but I feel a loss of the land. And so I very much appreciate the fact that the consultants in New Carlisle and Jared Huss are taking this very seriously. We have had quite a few conversations on top of the ones that we had a few years ago, and we're interacting on the proactive aspects of protecting the various aspects of the water and that kind of thing. So I feel that the county is going much farther than it had in the past, and so I'm cautiously optimistic. I do feel that the company should offer a trade for taking the land and paving over good quality land, productive land for probably forever. And so the way development should be happening just as a standard from here on out should include solar panels, and we should reduce the truck traffic, so all of those things, I think, if those are addressed, then I think maybe it's a good fit. good fit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm Jennifer Betts. I live at 730 Cottage Grove Avenue. I want to agree with what Deb said. We've made a lot of progress. The fact that I can go to the Chamber of Commerce website and read about the aquifer is pretty exciting stuff. So, thank you. We are making progress. I think I really come more with a question than an opinion, and it's really about the tax abatement. I think my question is, there's lots of goodwill at the beginning of the projects. My question is always, well, what happens if something is not met? What are the accountability mechanisms that might be inherent within the area or within the tax abatement in order that, you know, if a promise isn't kept, you know, what, do they give money back to the community if the aquifer is polluted? I really want it to be more than just a fine. Right? I mean, I think the hard part is not just putting in place the mechanisms of protection, but then what are the actual consequences and who is holding who accountable to make sure that everything is as the community agreed upon? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of Bill 11922? Either in person or online? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to comment on any comments that were made against the project?
Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity to provide some additional comment. So I would say tonight is obviously a first step in the process. And again, some comments that Ms. Betts made, as far as accountability, we'll talk about some of those accountability measures in the development agreement when we talk about that, as there are measures in here for annual monitoring and just general compliance. But I will tell you that this is the first step. We still have to go through site plan review. We still have to go through a number of permits that have to be gathered from state and local agencies. There's a number of steps that still have to be worked through. We have a lot of conversation that we'll be having with Indot, and that will involve a number of people. We understand that there are intersection improvements that do need to happen at Timothy and State Road 2, Quincy 2. We had a rezoning here tonight. So there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen with Indot about that corridor. Truck traffic, it is what it is. I mean, there is truck traffic on State Road 2. We're going to add more truck traffic to it. We do have land that we, the Redevelopment Commission, have acquired over a period of time for rail, if rail ends up being a viable business solution for this project. But we do think that there's, again, a number of steps that have been met. I do appreciate the comments that talk about how we have come a long way. We have talked a number of times, and not just talked, but we have made the representation that we have listened and we have heard comments about aquifer protection, environmentalism, rain development, sustainability, all those kind of things. And we have listened to those comments. We've incorporated in. We have a new zoning ordinance overlay that will be presented to the council here in the next couple of months. So there's a lot of very exciting pieces coming. And again, I think the comments have been made. When we started this project out in the IEC, there are existing businesses out there, and there's a lot of people that are employed out there. But as we look to add new projects to the site, they've got to be compatible, not only with the other businesses, but also with the community and the region. We think this is a great project. We think this is a great business partner, and we certainly hope for your approval of Bill Number 11922 for the tax abatement piece. And if there's any questions, myself or any of the team would be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council at this point?
Phil, I'm not sure if you could speak to this, or maybe Steve, but just in response to Ms. Betts's comments on any clawback provision in terms of abatements and how the compliance piece works on that, just to kind of reassure the public that, you know, that there is somebody overlooking and making sure that these commitments are met.
Certainly, yes. So in the development agreement in Section 4.02, there is an annual requirement to meet or to file documentation with the council for review that's done on a yearly basis. That'll be done for the next 15 or 16 or 17 years, however long the abatement runs for the pieces and parts of this project. That's something that the council has taken really seriously over the last several years, looking at tax abatement, tax abatement review. There's also a provision earlier in the agreement, again, that has certain milestones that have to be met. So by 2027, there's three conditions, and those conditions are contained within Section You think I helped write this? You think I'd remember where those are? 5.10, 5.10 on page 5, so reduction of real and personal property tax abatement. So should the company fail to complete the facility prior to December 31, 2027, if there's a cessation of operations for a period of 365 days, or if the company fails to initially satisfy 85% of their hiring goal by 12, December 31, 2027, again, additional penalties that apply to the company if those conditions are met. But again, from an environmental side, there's regulatory agencies that monitor the site, whether it's local or state or federal regulations. So, you know, again, this won't happen in a regulatory vacuum. This will be monitored by lots of different groups and lots of different people. One of the things that we didn't talk about today, the company's talked about it in the past, is there, you know, battery development, the battery cell development is a new industry. And so this is a company that's working with national regulators to help build national standards for battery production facilities. So we're on the forefront of not only being monitored with some of the things that we're talking about, but also that the company itself is working to do to self-monitor or create standards, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say I would be remiss if I didn't mention our financial advisor, Mr. Dalton, and our administrator, Ms. Preywat. They've done an outstanding job, in my opinion, as far as the documentation that is filed every year by companies that receive a tax abatement to make sure that these companies remain in compliance. I just want to put that on the record. At this point, the public hearing on Bill Number 11922 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill? A motion to pass Bill Number 11922 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Kanarecki. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski. Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries 9-0.
Let the record show that Bill Number 11922 was passed by a vote of 9-0. Clerk, will you please read the next bill resolution, Bill Number 14522?
A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council authorizing approval of a development agreement between St. Joseph County, the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission, and Ultium Cells LLC, petitioner, St. Joseph County.
So before you today is Bill Number 145-22, and this is the resolution related to the development agreement for this project. As noted earlier, the Redevelopment Commission approved this, a similar resolution this morning. Board of Commissioners also heard and approved a resolution similar to this this morning. So this is the resolution before you today. Again, contained within the development agreement, which is attached to the document, are the commitments the company will make, the commitments that the county will make, and, again, provisions such as tax abatement monitoring, compliance with project milestones, the incentives as far as infrastructure development pieces that the county will do, and then also the aquifer piece, the fire protection piece are all part of this agreement. We think this is a very solid, very sturdy agreement. All the pieces and parts are here. There's not a lot of extra to this. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council from Mr. Shalio? Hearing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 14522. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I need to sign in again?
No.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Betts. I live at 730 Cottage Grove Avenue. Opposition feels like a strong word. I realize that there's a lot of potential, there's a lot of potential for good in this. But I guess I just wanted to say, for the record, I just wanted to say a few things. Some people have commented the fact that we're moving at the speed of business. I actually wish we were moving at the speed of community. You all know that this has been a contentious process for multiple years. I'll remember September of 2020, when this room was packed, people speaking in opposition to a rezoning of land to industrial 800-plus acres. Despite that opposition, the council, you all voted to go ahead and rezone the land industrial. And I think after that, people have felt a lot of resignation, perhaps, that the community doesn't matter as much as what other people have planned. And I wish that, I'm really grateful that we're doing a county comprehensive land use process, and I am on the task force and was asked to be on the task force for the county comprehensive land use process. And I actually naively thought we might finish that before we made big decisions. I thought maybe we would actually have a vision for the community before we started moving forward with various projects. So I understand that we need jobs. I understand that jobs are good. People have made some good comments on that. But ultimately, this is going to affect the land forever. We're destroying prime farmland rather than doing infill development in the city. If the aquifer is polluted, it's still kind of unclear as to what would be the consequences of that. So, I mean, this decision tonight, it's more than a 30-year decision. It's really a 500, it's a thousand-year decision. And so when we're forced to move at speed, that doesn't take account not just communities, but also ecological communities, that's hard. So I really thank you all. I feel like you have done due diligence. Everyone is really trying. But hopefully, eventually, we'll get it to the part where the community is leading. And I hope that happens sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition of Bill 14522?
Yeah, I would like to speak. I missed, I'm sorry, I didn't move at the speed of whatever. I missed the, on the pro side, I do support the, you know, the project, the development agreement. I did want to say, make some comments that I couldn't make in my three minutes before on the development of development agreements. I think one thing I'm committing to, and I know others are as well, is that we have a more community process for developing those agreements. And as you know, the tax abatement ordinance, which I worked on, oh, 12 years ago with Mark and Mr. Katanzerite and others and all of you past, we need to make sure that those development agreements not only include environmental considerations, traffic and wages, but also that the clawback or the accounting provisions also include that as well. And furthermore, I think that the county, I said in previous comments, the county could stand in good stead to perhaps develop an environmental office or a conservation office, if you will, in which we could look at creative avenues for using tax abatement and TIF monies, for example, to offset some of the concerns that people have out in New Carlisle about green space, about farmland, and about aquifer contamination. And I would hope that the county would be open to more creative uses of TIF money than just for infrastructure and traffic and tax abatement for the corporation itself and protecting our quality of life here. And I pledge to work on that as well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Countryman, 529-59-Timothy-Road, New Carlisle. I wasn't going to come back up here, but Jen kind of gave me the guts to do it and say this. It is a huge slap in the face to every person that is committing so much time working on the comprehensive plan for the county to push this through. It's just a huge insult to everybody that puts in so much time. I'm on two different committees on it, and this is just, it's just like a knife in the back by pushing this through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of Bill Number 14522?
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street. I wasn't going to speak either, but Mary just triggered something, and Jen also. I too am on the, on two different parts of the new comprehensive plan, and it has been an argument I've been making all along, that we're putting the cart before the horse. What if by chance something in the new comprehensive land use plan says some material, some activity that Ultium or somebody affiliated with Ultium, it's going to need to come into the area? And the comprehensive land use plan, all of us say, have said, we can't let that type of material into the area. But it's already here. You're tying their hands behind their backs and saying, okay, well, I guess it's too late since that material we say can't come in here is already here. How about if you limit it to 50%? It just makes for back-room deals if you let something come in here before you develop the new plan, which we don't know what is going to be allowed, what is going to be, no, no, you can't come in here. Of course, there's a shredder, there's garbage dumps, there's refineries. That stuff is all the list that, as long as your arm, that we're not going to consider letting come in here. But that one thing that may come up in this work with the comprehensive land use plan that might get into the aquifer, that if the plan was in place before the Ultium plant was built or anything was built there, we could have avoided kicking our can down the road and poisoning the people down the aquifer or even ourselves, it's time to quit kicking that can down the road. Get the rules in place first before you start bringing people in to set the rules that you have to live by. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of Bill Number 14522? Either present or online. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill Number 14522. Do I hear a motion? A motion to pass Bill Number 14522 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzerite. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 14522 was passed by a vote of 9-0. Next on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
Hello.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This meeting-